Good evening, everybody. This is the Halifax Board of Selectmen's Meeting on Tuesday, August 14th. We are being taped today by Cablecast and YouTube presented by Area 58 Community Access Media. And we will start the meeting with the Budget Leaguers.
Budget Leaguers to the flag of the United States of America and Tudor Republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Charlie's not able to be here this evening, so it's just the three of us. Does anybody have any changes to the agenda or any additions that they would like to make?
Nope.
I would like to do one quick thing, and that's to update everybody on the traffic issue for the pickup and drop off for the students at elementary school.
You want to put that on the agenda, is that what you're saying?
Yes, please.
The clerk can do this.
Okay. Thank you. Hi.
Actually, he delegates it. Could you put that on?
Tom, do you want to do your thing?
Do the little bit.
Do you want to do the minutes first?
Sure. Has everybody had an opportunity to review this regular sessions for July 10th and July 24th?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as printed?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Tom?
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants, commitments, and a bill. Vendor warrant number 10 for $129,775.42. Payroll warrant number 11 for $221,383.22. Vendor warrant number 12 for $561,132.22. School warrant number 13 for $133,871.84. Withholding warrant number 14 for $76,639.76. Ambulance commitment number 8A for $18,448. Ambulance commitment 8B for $85,883. Payable to the Halifax Post Office $1,002.49.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the following warrant and commitment. Vendor warrant number 15 for $228,309.7 and mobile home park fee number 8 for $5,161.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve payment of the selectman bills dated August 14, 2018. National grid, $1,350.15. National grid, $56.29. That would be for the concession stand. Stam annual dues, $30. What does Stam stand for? Do we know?
This is for...
Oh, I could've turned the page.
It's a community member for the small town administrations in Massachusetts.
All right, just in case anybody was wondering. Brooks and Durensis, PC, $4,00561.67. Michael C. Gilman Esquire, $231. W.B. Mason, $462.98. Attorney Lawrence P. Mayo, $568.75. Anybody seeing a trend here with all these attorneys?
Just saying. Keeping us out of trouble. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tom. You all set? So I think I'm just going to talk about the pickup and the drop off, just because the police chief is here, so he can kind of fill in if I miss anything. So as you both are aware, we have had some traffic issues on 106 because of the drop-off pickup procedure at the elementary school. They've been trying to work it through over the years, and they came up with a pretty good model, but with the location of that, what's happening is the traffic gets pushed all the way down 106 in both directions, and it becomes very difficult for people to cut in and out of the traffic. And the traffic goes way down to the fire station, so that sometimes we have an ambulance leaving the bay and they have to take a left. It's difficult to get through the traffic because it's so backed up. So it is becoming a safety issue.
Anybody who drives down there in the morning has witnessed it during school times. It's awful.
Yes. So the fire chief, our police chief and I went over and met with the principal. We were trying to come up with some alternatives, and we ended up walking outside, and Ted came up with actually this great idea, is because the, right now, sometimes they try to snake the cars, so it's more than one. So it's hard to get that many cars on the property off the street. So there's some dead trees in that area. In fact, during some storms, we've had some of the limbs fall on the cars, so we already identified that they were not safe for residents. So we invited Steve Hayward, our highway surveyor, to come down and take a look at those trees. So the idea would be, we're going to remove the dead trees. Steve has some leftover asphalt from a job, and he, I don't, I should draw it out real quick for you guys. But you know that triangle? You know, like, this is the way in?
Yeah.
Right? And there's a triangle. So he's going to grade this whole thing, take out the trees that are dying, and then sort of just grade it and gravel it, or just pave it for now. And then the idea would be, because we have such challenges when it comes to parking at the elementary school for certain events or even the fireworks, it would open up more parking for us. So Steve Hayward is going to start that next week, as long as you guys are fine with that.
So it's going to be, it's not going to be a roundabout anymore, it's just going to be straight?
Yes, it's going to be a straight. Yeah. So, and the idea is to get as many students, I mean, cars off 106 during that pickup/drop-off time, so they can, they're going to get cones and just create more aisles. So it may not solve 100% of it.
But at least it gets the car, hopefully it gets the cars off 106.
Yes. So it's definitely worth the try.
It's a danger. It's a danger, because people are flying over the hill. A lot of times when they come by the school, they really don't see what's going on. They see the car out there, but they don't know that they stopped, parked, actually.
So I just wanted to make sure you guys were okay with it.
Sure, yeah. Give it a try. You're going to do something.
Okay. All right. Okay. So we have about five minutes before our next, our first appointment, so I'm just going to briefly go through, I'm going to play the role of Charlie for the evening. So we got notification from Sergeant Benner that he will be taking college-credited class, so he needs to just let us know, so he is qualified for the reimbursement. We received a letter from Copelman and Page stating that Alana Quirk has withdrawn from the case of the building inspector versus Robert Burks.
So what does that mean to us?
I don't know if that means, you know, I know that there was a, I know that things have been resolved, so I think it could just be that it's just the end of...
It's the end of the development.
Yeah.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah. Stay with me. I'm just trying to go forward. Charlie says. Okay, so we have a bridge report. So the mass DOT for Thompson Street and Winnetouxet and South Street, and Winnetouxet along with one for Thompson Street and Bartlett Brook, all show significant deficiencies. Charlie's forwarded these to the Highway Survey with the hope that the engineers will be, will be able to use and will be able to come up with specifications for any necessary repairs that need to be done. So they're all in the folder if anybody wants to look at it. So there's pictures of, you know, what specifically the deficiencies are. I know that the fire chief is coming in, I think at 9 o'clock, to talk about the contract for the ambulance billing, so I'll just move on to the town meeting review session. And Charlie just wants to remind us that on Thursday, August 16th at 4:00 PM, there's a pre-town meeting meeting to go through the warrant with the new moderator and town council, if any of you are available. We have ADA grants, application period is from August 1st until October 1st, and the COE project might be eligible, so Charlie just wants to put us on notice that that's a possibility, that we could perhaps see some, help with some ADA requirements. Bob's going to be coming in at 8:15 for my best. I'm going to unattach the trailer permit. See, I just want to see what's on the agenda that we have. We have so much that we're meeting with people, so. McDonald Industries, as you both were aware, we were supposed to have a meeting on a Monday night. A couple weeks ago, we had that issue happen at Town Hall that we had to close for the evening, and that has been tentatively rescheduled until August 28th.
She wanted to do a site visit beforehand, so...
I'm not going to be very, so I'm not here on August 28th. I'm not available at all that week, so I don't know if you guys want to, because that would be a regular second meeting. I think it's totally fine if you guys have that meeting and I'm not there. It's up to you, so...
Well, I've been on the property before. That was one of the major issues when I first got elected, I seen that. So I'll see what plans look like when they brand them.
I've been through the gas-to-energy thing and then the removal, so I'm pretty familiar with the side.
Yeah, I thought that, yeah, we had, we were prepared for when we met with them. So right now, the idea is to have them on the agenda for August 28th. Do you feel comfortable with that? Or would you rather wait for us to have a full board? Like, what do you think?
Might be better to have a full board, but I mean, when are you back?
I'm, I'm...
Or is it just that day?
No, see, I have Maya for the first part of the week, and then I'm away for three days, so I don't really come back until that Friday.
Okay, so you're out.
Yeah, well, yeah, sorry.
So do you want to let Charlie know that you guys do not want to do a site visit? Is that what you...
I don't think it's necessary, because I think everybody's pretty familiar with the property.
Excuse me?
Pardon me?
I have a question for you guys for that.
Sure.
When was the last time you were on that site property?
A year or so.
Okay, how much, how much...
I mean, I know it's changed on the Bridgewater side.
Yeah, if that's what I had wanted to find, that, how much, how much stuff has been, since the last time you were there, how much tonnage has been dropped?
Yeah, there's been a lot of stuff put there, but again, it's been on the Bridgewater side, so, you know, we're being asked to extend it over. I haven't actually seen the plan yet, but...
Nor have I.
Yeah, because I'm on Laurel Street, so...
Oh, you are?
Yeah, you're certainly affected, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. That's why I'm here.
Oh, okay, you are here for that specifically?
Yeah.
Is that what everybody's here for? Oh, okay, because we have a big crowd today.
Sorry.
Would you mind cheering? No, 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 we love to have people.
They heard about how entertaining you were, so...
No, we love to have people, but I want to be, make sure that we're going to address whatever you need. Are you all pretty much here for the same thing, or did you just want to...
Yeah.
Which one?
Trailer.
Trailer permit on my...
Oh, okay, okay, perfect. All right, thank you. All right, I just wanted to make sure. So right now, this is, it's 7:45, so this is perfect, because I didn't want you all to have to wait. So it's 7:45, and we are meeting with Jan and Raymond Jacobs, and you are...
I'm your daughter Sasha.
Oh, hi.
Jan.
Oh, hi, Jan, how are you?
I'm Raymond.
Oh, hi.
Yes, you too.
You guys don't like being together or something?
All right.
They're married.
Okay.
This is their quiet time apart. So this is their quiet time apart. Well, it's nice that everybody comes. Okay, so I'm dealing with Tudor for Bolisac, because they're town administrators, and so normally we're like, I'm a little bit more organized, so, sorry. Okay, so we are here for a extension for a temporary permit, and the, and the application was received on July 10th of this year. The building inspector issued a 60-day maximum permit. The, we received schematic of where the trailer is. We have a copy of the butters list received. This is the hearing date. The building inspector has approved it, the Board of Health is fine with it, the water superintendent is fine with it. We are sitting here at the public hearing, and you are looking 12 months to collect monies from insurance and time to hire contract to do repairs. So why don't you tell me about, so this is a, this is a property that's located at 23 Anawan Drive?
That's right.
And why don't you tell me a little bit about...
Well, the house burned.
Okay.
And we've been living on a trailer that was gut for us through a company.
I can't remember the name. That's okay, that's okay.
And we're temporarily residing there.
Okay, and so what this request looks like is that you're seeking an additional, you need 10 months extension?
I need time to rebuild my home.
Yes, so this is saying 10 months, right? The request at this point is for 10 months?
Oh, okay.
Yes. Yes, is that what you...
Yeah, that's what the gentleman, the gentleman from American Mobile Homes came up.
Right. They said it should be completed, should be completely rebuilt.
Okay, okay, so this...
I'm hoping just sooner.
Yeah, well, yeah, obviously, yeah, we're hoping for you that it's really well. Send positive vibes your way that that's what happened, so, does anybody have any questions at all?
It's not an unreasonable request. I've worked with the insurance companies a lot over the years, they just keep dragging it on and on and on, so...
Is the 10 months going to be adequate for you to do what you're doing?
Yeah, then they just cut you off completely, yeah.
So, you know, it's kind of hard, I go cross-eyed trying to look at both of you.
So they're saying six months to a year for rebuilding, it's kind of the timeframe that they...
So six months to 10, 10 months would be, would be adequate?
So 10 months at this point would be adequate.
When, when are they planning to break ground, you know?
Or, or, they haven't done the demo.
They'll do the demolition, the demo.
Yeah, it hasn't been demoed yet. We are just starting, we've just started getting estimates, so we're still trying to put things in place as far as...
Well, I'm just trying to get a sense of how much time you're going to need, whether or not the 10 months is going to be enough, because if you haven't done demo yet, and if you wait until too late in the winter, the ground's going to be frozen, it's going to be...
Always come back for extension.
It should be within, within a month's time, and then they're going to start to rebuild.
All right, so we'll do it 10 months, and then, you know, we can see how things go, and if you need an extension, you can certainly come back in.
We got a hardship, so I don't see a major issue with it, you know? And I, and I know your husband saw this. If he was by himself, I might not be agreeable.
Okay, so does anybody have a motion?
I would move that we grant a 10-month extension on the trailer located at...
23 Anawan.
Is that, that's, that's still in Halifax, right?
Yes. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you all for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a great night. You're more than welcome to stay.
Good luck, good luck with the building process.
Yeah.
I know, it usually is, so it's really nice to look out and see people.
Getting all excited, too, having an audience.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night. Drive careful out there.
I have this cog right here, because he did get the list, and he was...
Are you here for a special reason? Are you here for a special reason?
Small list.
The McDonald, the McDonald.
Are you here just for, so do you want to just have the discussion so you don't have to sit around?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
I'll ask.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can... I mean, you're more than welcome to stay, but we're really, our channel is not that popular.
Did you, did you put anything in writing to us, or would you, so we'll have it?
I don't know. We should run our names.
No speeding in the hallway. No, but it would, it would be great if we could do that, that way we have it on record and show your objections to us, so if for some reason you can't make the meeting that we agreed on the 28th.
Thank you, best of luck.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
You two, thank you so much for coming in.
Good luck.
Okay, so, so that these lovely people don't have to, you know, sit through the entire meeting.
I know it's pretty interesting, but...
We do a soft shoe later on.
Yeah, exactly.
So let's talk about the McDonald, and I'm going to do full disclosure, I don't know a heck of a lot about it.
Neither do I.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we were hoping to have the presentation so that at least it would answer some questions, allow people the opportunity to ask some questions.
Right.
That didn't happen, because we had an incident here at Town Hall, we postponed it, so I don't think we've rescheduled that.
To the 28th.
Always the 28th, okay.
Yeah, so that presentation would have occurred on the 28th.
So that's really the night everybody's going to find out something or anything about it, for all intensive purposes.
Because we would be guessing at this point, what if, what kind of tonnage they're talking about, how often they want to bring stuff over, what the results is going to be, because they haven't given us...
I just heard contaminated soils and what contaminated soils amounts to, yeah.
And then, you know, you know, my concern is basically, you know, not only that, then you're bringing in, you're going to have to walk out your equipment, then you're going to have, you know, dust from basically, if you have dirt coming in, you get a windy day and it comes your way, it's going to be coming over the bogs.
My understanding is that the landfill was never actually kept, so that would have to take place at some point anyway. I've always kind of anticipated someday down the road they were going to come back and try to, you know, do something with it. I mean, if you've watched it over the years, you can see how much it's compressed.
Yeah, see, we, we, when we bought our property, it was already at the...
Was already closed. Yeah, it was already terminated.
Mount Halifax, Mount Halifax was...
So, you know, then one of our neighbors basically kind of just, you know, said, you know, what's going on? And I'm like, I have no idea what you're talking about. And then he kind of just gave, you know, kind of, gave us some of, you know, the past history of the dump.
28, 28 years ago, they closed, they closed it down. That was one of the major issues when I ran my first campaign, was VFI, and hauling stuff in the middle of the night and load after load, and changing, so they closed it down, you know? But we have not got the specifics, so I hate to tell you, give you misinformation at this point, what's going to happen, or when it's going to happen, or if it's going to happen at all.
That is, all, all we want to see is just, you know, facts.
Right, exactly.
And that's it.
Yeah, and which is what we want to hear, too, and see.
That's why we'd rather have the person in the room, that way they can ask, answer specific questions, rather than us guessing to, to retrace our steps.
So what we could do is, you could leave your name and phone number with Pam, is that okay, Pam?
Oh, yeah.
And then, once we know the date and time of the rescheduling, she could give you a call.
Okay.
So right now, you know, if, I don't know if they're going to do it on the 28th, but, you know, thank you. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
So how long have you lived on Laurel Street?
Moved, moved there in 2010.
Oh, newcomers?
Yeah.
I grew up in Hanson, so...
Where's that?
Reasonably close by.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
Okay. Oh, that's the trash hauling, okay. All right. Sorry.
Hi. Your presentation, your job, that's my fault, I'm sorry.
Okay, so I'm just going to move on if it's okay.
Yes, okay.
So we're meeting with that person, we, okay, so...
You're welcome.
We have another potential trailer permit, not for this evening, it's for the...
Have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The building inspector issued a 60-day trailer permit on August 7th to Gordon Andrews at 674 Clement Street location. The expiration date is October 5th. He has been advised of the extension permit process, the last selectmen's meeting before October 5th is September 25th, and any extension will require an application to be filed by the beginning of September.
Okay.
So...
That's FYI.
Yep. The bylaws and zoning bylaws, all that, all that were approved at town meeting in the May 2019, 18, were approved by the AG's office without comment, so that's great news.
Yeah.
Yep, and again, McDonald Industries, we just went through that. There was a violation of zoning bylaws at 75 Hayward Street. The building inspector was notified, has notified Alan Prot of his violation, renting room and board, and Charlie will follow up with the building inspector for the selectmen's meeting for August 28th. The primary election is posted, six copies for the board to sign, and the posting will be given back to the town clerk. Do we have those?
They're in the folder, they're cardboardy.
Oh, yeah, they're not, they're usually huge.
Didn't we already sign them?
Yeah, no, that's, that's, the big ones are the ones, this is for the primaries, cardboard, it should be at the beginning.
I don't see them. Okay. I have the contracts of the, let me just keep looking. I'm going to keep flipping.
You keep flipping.
I'm flipping, you guys. I'm flipping, I can feel cardboardy. Okay, so, do you need a motion for us to sign?
No, no, you guys are going to don't do that.
I don't think so, because it's just a primary.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next thing that we need to talk about is more signing, which is the trash hauling contract, and there are two comments, I mean, there are two copies of the amendment to the contract with Holland for 2019 for hauling chargers, and the entire board should sign, so I will entertain a motion to authorize us to sign the contract.
Second. I'm sorry.
Let's move it. I'll second it then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, what's interesting, it doesn't say, there's not enough spaces for all of us, but...
I get left out again.
No, you can just...
I'm kidding.
Sign that to me. There's three lines, but it's supposed to be like titled, and all that stuff. Amy, can you keep that on your side so I don't mess it up, or should I?
I'm sorry?
Can you keep those with you, so that...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, yeah, FBI, I signed, just give that to me.
Okay. Oh, there are three copies here.
I do.
Oh.
Don't sign this one.
You guys sign the other.
Yeah, I'm signing that one.
That's okay.
I want that one back.
So then we're back to Kimba.
Yeah. That one, we're going to sign at 9 o'clock.
To Kimba.
This is the billing, ambulance billing one.
I think you, I think that's the same on the top you signed.
Yeah, it is.
No, no.
Yeah. It says addendum at the top, it's a one, two sheet.
Yeah, this is definitely the, yeah, the business association.
Yeah, but I don't have the Holland, it's not in here.
Does it, does it, or is it...
Oh, here, right here. I'm looking for a contract, right.
I know, I know, it's kind of like, yeah, it's only because it's a...
So that's all, three of us?
That's okay, just slide that back down to her.
Oh, well, triple the pleasure.
Yeah.
All right, so Charlie should keep his day job. Right?
Okay.
Okay, it's almost 8:00. You still have two more minutes. Okay. All right, that one, I'm going to take a little longer. Okay, so, let's just do it for your point. All right, that one I'm gonna take a little longer. Okay, so, let's just do it for your point.
Well, this is wrong, it's gotten you down his chin.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that matter?
No, just sign this one out, and I'll put like a sticker in here that I'll clean it up. Hold up, I'll come in and clean it up.
So Teresa Levinson from the Halifax Fireworks Committee has submitted her resignation with regret. She states in her resignation that she has really enjoyed working on this event each year, but that it's been very challenging due to the lack of volunteers, and that it's been, it really is quite a burden. This woman has done so much work, and people sit and watch these fireworks, and I think some of them realize what work goes into it, and the whole family day, I mean, I can't believe, you know, what she and the other member, Colleen, I can never pronounce her last name, it's Brumica. Yeah, so she, the two of those women put together that entire golf tournament, put together the whole family fun day, and coordinated the fireworks. I mean, it's amazing what they do, and, you know, we are so appreciative of their time, and so we totally understand Teresa, having the feeling that, you know, it's, it's time for other people to sort, stand up, and if they want the community event to actually volunteer and put in some work. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Teresa Levinson.
As well as to send a letter of thanks to her, and wish her well in her future endeavors.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so it is eight o'clock, well, it's six, it's seven fifty-nine, but we'll go. So we have an appointment. Oh, all those in favor, I did. Oh, it was Troy that made the motion.
Trying to keep up with us?
Yeah, so at eight o'clock we have Judy Raticus.
Rakutus.
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 So close, right?
Yep.
Long time still see.
My main name was Alomacy, so I didn't... Oh, so you like having a special name?
I like having this name, because there isn't another Judy Rakutus around anywhere.
See, that's good. Like I was the only Kim Ellese, but there's a lot of Kim Elles.
With powers, there were many of them around, and then when I got to White, there were more than of them. And now Rakutus, I'm all by myself.
Awesome, so you're here to be appointed to the OCES Board of Directors on behalf of the town of Halifax. So do you wanna just tell us a brief, just tell us a little bit about yourself, how long you've been a resident in town?
It's coming on three years.
Awesome.
And moved in the day after Thanksgiving in two thousand fifteen. Was on my way to Florida, and then my husband passed away, so I ended up here, which... I lived in Halifax when I was a child. I was in nineteen forty...
Whoa, don't go there.
Forty-two or forty-five, and that was just as, as the war was ending. And I always remember it, I still have pictures of the house where I lived in, it's still there. The big farm, the house is there, but the fund is all gone. But I always wanted to come back, forever. I know, I know.
Awesome.
It was kind of an accident, my daughter lives in East Bridge Water, and she wanted to be close to mine, so, and I love it.
Awesome.
I'm so happy to be back.
So glad that you're here, and that you're willing to volunteer for our community. Does anybody have any questions for Judy?
I just appreciate the fact that you're volunteering to do things, but we're always in need of intelligent individuals to do that.
She was excited too, which is awesome.
I am.
That's great.
I mean, I've just taken that, uh, F, F, yes, F.
Yeah.
F, F.
Oh, you did, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, good, we can appoint you.
I know, I mean...
The possibility of things that could happen.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of them I knew, you know, in the past.
Sense, right.
And some of them, they were very tricky, I mean, that's, that was fascinating.
Yeah, there's little nuances of difference there that can trip you up.
Right, and there were a couple.
No, sure, they tripped me up too, and I've been doing this a long time.
Luckily you can keep going over it.
Right, yeah. Well, when I saw it, I thought, oh, yeah, you know, but...
Some of them you still go, eh, I don't know, that just doesn't seem right.
Do you understand what the schedule is and the time commitment?
I have no idea.
Bummer.
I mean, I have an idea.
She does.
Well, she told me it's one, one Tuesday a month. I'm, is that right?
Yeah, it's the last Tuesday of the month. For now, it's just gonna be an hour, and if she wants to go on a committee, it will be two hours, because the committee meets an hour before, like nine to ten, and I think this appointment's ten to eleven.
Okay.
And we'll start back up again in September.
Awesome. So do I have a motion to appoint Judy Rakutus to the OCES Board of Director?
Oh hardly, yes.
Absolutely second to it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
It's good seeing you again.
You have more than one mistake. Whatever you want.
I wanted to ask you, you know, my hand, that's not too dirty.
She's still married to me, I love this girl.
That's cool. Well, so, I don't know if that's good.
So I'm signing this.
Yeah, she's signing the card.
I always, my brother-in-law said to say how you...
Nice of you, it's dancing.
Thank you for that, I needed a lot tonight.
Thank you so much for coming in. Every day.
Your kids were brought up in my care.
Minute signed. Sorry about that. Up to the minute.
Oh, no, that's... Okay, I'm just, just making sure I have everything to date, okay. All right. I'm gonna put those contracts aside so we stop signing them. Okay, so the Board of Health has a door request additional training request. Because of a recent incident in the Board of Health Office, the Board of Health Board has requested that a French door, Charlie's assuming, for one of which the bottom half can be closed and secured, which I don't think, I think that's more of a barn door, right?
Yes.
The French door is like one of those glass things.
Yes.
Okay, so, I'll cross that out and call it a French door, I mean a barn door.
Tell them, tell them to keep the foreigners out, put an American door on the way.
They are requesting that a barn door be installed to replace the current door, and that additional training be available for employees in order to deal with these types of instances. He recommends that the Board of Selectmen, Mrs. Charlie, request the building committee to have the door installed, and that the board ask to ask the police chief to run another training session for these employees who are interested. And I don't, I, so we had, this is what I think the incident was, I think that we had somebody who was irate in the Board of Health Office raising their voice, and so I think that the Board of Health, I know that the chief did put on a training session not very long ago.
Two months ago, I think.
About...
Something a little more personal than an irate customer, I mean, we're talking about, you know, workplace violence, things like this. I'm not that sure what happened raises to a workplace violence, I think it was just a loud customer. But, you know, if the door makes them feel uncomfortable, that's great. Again, I can't stress enough that if there's something happening at the time as we went over...
Call nine one one.
Pick up the phone, I mean, that's, that's the quickest, easiest, what we learn, you know, our whole lives, and I think that's the most effective resolution also. I'd be happy to run that, that class again, I mean, it's, it's pretty basic. But I, I think we need to get over the, I guess, the stigma of calling nine one one. There isn't one, I mean, we answer two or three or four a day, it's just, it's just one of those things that happen. So I, I think, you know, maybe Charlie can put out, remind everybody that if they're uncomfortable with anything going on in, in one of the offices, that, that's the appropriate action, and we'll deal with it.
The only time it gets a little dicey is if somebody's alone in an office. Have we ever looked at the individual panic buttons?
I, I'm not a fan of those, to be honest with you, and I think that...
It was asked of me, and that's why.
Yeah, no, it's, it's still, it doesn't come, won't come to the, this, the police station, it's still gonna go to dispatch.
Dispatch, right.
It still has to go through a phone system, and again, as we stated in, in the, in the last meeting that we had, that they don't have to, you know, pick up the phone and go, I need help.
Dial it, yeah.
Dial it and set it down, and forget about it.
And it definitely works, because I had a situation a few years back where I mist dialed nine to get an outside line a couple of times, and the next thing I knew there was a couple of officers, a crash cart coming down the hallway, so...
But, yeah, I just, just think of maybe reminded, that's the appropriate action at this point. And again, you know, we can, we can do a quick little thing, but I think just a reminder that, you know, dial the phone, set it down, just forget about it, and it's as covert as anything really, and it's, it would actually be quicker than any sort of panic button or anything like that.
There's a five.
Well, that was my first thought, is there's nine one one is the obvious choice here.
And it, you know, if they're alone in the office or alone on the floor, that's, you know, that's, and a comfortable feeling, obviously, but even if somebody in the next office overhears, overhears something and they're concerned.
I think that's important, I think that other people should be alert to the fact that somebody's raising their voice. Should kind of tune you into the idea of, the interesting thing though is, are we still, do you still have to dial nine nine one one?
I don't believe so.
I'm, I'm not sure of that.
I'll double check with Caesar or Charlie to see what, how that acts.
Because that could confuse somebody if in fact that's the case.
See, that door is called a Dutch door.
Stranger danger.
I was, yeah, a Dutch door.
Well, you know, the Dutch doors are tough, I mean, you can reach over and open them, I...
Yeah, but I think it's just to stop the feeling of somebody charging at you, right? Because like even on the counter, like anybody could jump over one of the counters.
If somebody really wants to get to you, they're gonna, they're gonna get to you.
Happens in a split seconds.
So when the rest of the building committee's here, we'll just, we just have a request from the Board of Health to install a Dutch door in their office. And a Dutch door is a door. The, the top or the bottom can be fixed, like, to split.
I always call them split level.
Depending on where the panels break, you can use the door that you got, yeah, just have to mortise in one more hinge, that's all.
Okay, but we'll just bring it up when the whole committee's here, but that's what we were talking about. We have a request from the Board of Health. You could do, thanks Bob, or my best Bob, if they call you. Okay, so we still have a couple more minutes, okay? Because we have to follow the rules and go according to the clock.
Of Charlie's...
We're off leash, Charlie's not here today. Charlie is, unfortunately, he's had a family issue that he could not avoid, yeah. Speaking of family, we have a request for two different employees for family leave, family and medical leave. We had one for Dave Swanson. So I think we'll just take these in pieces, and the leave for Dave Swanson begins on July sixteen.
Is there an injury or something on him?
Uh, no, it's a Family Leave Act.
Oh, okay.
So we need...
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We also have a request for family leave for Sandra Nolan, and that date is beginning on August thirteenth. Do I have a motion?
Yesterday, yeah?
No.
No, it's a, it's a family emergency, she needs it.
Yeah, so...
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. We have three more minutes, Bob. Button it. Okay, so... I'm not, I don't wanna talk about that, because we don't have the rest of the... So Charlie did not post on the agenda the discussion of some moving of the offices, and plus, I, I feel like that needs to do... So many people are concerned about that on Facebook, I think that it needs to be brought up and on the agenda at... Right, Shuffeling?
We would literally have to rearrange the entire town hall to do that.
Yeah, because this is a request about somebody else's workspace, not the one that was discussed a couple weeks ago. So we should put this on the agenda.
Mm-huh.
Yeah, okay. All right. The next thing is Brian Cook. Charlie has not seen any correspondence from Brian Cook since last, since the last selectmen's meeting. He did recommend that he send any materials to Larry Mayo, and Larry has not mentioned anything coming in. Alex Cook asked about any correspondence during the last three weeks, and we told him that we had nothing in common, and I believe this has to do with the property that's on...
Spring Street, yes.
Spring Street on the water.
Yeah, there's, there's a bunch of issues, including family issues.
Which is really not, it has nothing to do with us.
Well, didn't they say, didn't they authorize him to speak on their behalf?
I believe so.
Some did, some didn't.
Yeah. Oh, so this is really weird, I've heard about this one. So Charlie puts in his notes, that Charlie's working on the issue, and maybe thankfully Charlie, I mean, um, the chief, the lake master is here, so...
The harbor mastering?
Flagging rocks and other obstacles in, in Mont Poncet Pond based on a complaint by a resident. So this is, I don't know if you've heard anything about it, this is in Charlie's notes, but somebody said that there were big boulders in the pond, and when I lived on the pond, we used to flag them ourselves.
On the east lake most.
Right, we would flag them ourselves, so that... Yeah, so I don't know if it's our responsibility to be flagging rocks.
Well, I don't think we have the authority to flag rocks, because that's their purview of the state.
State, right.
Okay, that's what I thought, so thank you, Ted.
I mean, we went through, I don't recall, the Rock State is with Kendrick when we had a dock issue.
Yeah.
And they got a ruling on who controls what areas of the waterways, and...
Right.
And that, that'd be stated, they'd have to, it's just a permit from the state to do that. Now, we're not gonna, if somebody wants to walk and mock the rocks in front of their property, or, or, you know, do it on their own, we're certainly not gonna, you know, have an issue with that.
Because once we start doing it, then we become responsible if we miss one, and I don't think that's our responsibility.
Yeah, from the town's perspective, you're right, you don't wanna take that.
No, and like I said, when I lived down the lake many, many years ago, like, we would, we would mark them ourselves so that people were aware of them, in fact, we knew exactly where to water ski based on the flats.
Especially Westlake down in the far corner during the...
Yeah, and full disclosure, it was not me waterskiing, I would be driving.
There's a flat, flat stone there.
Yeah. See, I'm really glad you're here for that one, thank you. Okay.
It's eight fifteen.
Day fifteen. It's Mudfest Bob time. All right, Bob. So you are here to talk about Mudfest November two thousand and eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. Is everything gonna be the same?
Absolutely the same, I, I put in one request to downsize by two police officers, you know, four to six.
Chief?
Are you downsizing the activity, is that what it is?
We're not having the turnoffs, like, the very, first two Mudfests were extremely well, a lot of people know that, but...
The last one I kinda noticed was not quite as attended.
They're kind of a little off about that, too, you know, so...
Well, if you use new mud instead of the old mud, you wouldn't have the problem.
We're gonna have to get new mud.
Yeah, we were farming rocks, weren't we? We're back to rocks again.
Yeah, back to rocks all over the place, so they're like a rock fest.
Chief, how do you feel about their...
Change of title, we've been working with them all along, and we've been reducing the numbers since it started.
Yeah, they've been good care of you.
Yeah, well, we can talk about it, I don't wanna commit to anything right tonight, but we can, we can work on the math over.
So do you wanna make your decision closer to, to see how many enrollments you have?
That's typically what we do, I don't, I don't need a big leave time for it, and if, you know, someone comes to me, tells me the, the week before that, you know, ticket sales are way down, and our attendance is gonna be down, and we're happy to work with that, or if the other direction, hopefully, you know, tickets are way up, and you've got a lot more participants, and we can talk about it, so yeah, I'm flexible, it's not, it's not a decision we have to make.
Are you gonna be here?
Yes.
Just, just asking.
For, for that decision, probably.
Yeah, he'll be here at the decision.
Yeah.
Obviously, the decision phase, I'm a P.
Okay, I mean, I knew it was close.
Are you gonna be participating in it now?
So we, we have to get an extension on your leave until, before you leave?
Well, we can talk about that.
So what we can do is, we can...
Six.
Oh, no, no, or this, we, oh yeah.
Oh, I was gonna say, you can go either, put it on four if we need more.
Well, this is what I was thinking, how about if we put on, the decision on the officers will be made on the week of October... Is that okay?
Yeah.
November.
November, no, but when is Mudfest?
November eleventh.
Oh, November eleventh, so by November first, the decision...
Someone's gonna see me the, the week before, or someone, and...
Or someone.
Like we usually do, and we'll, um...
He's always, he's always taking very good care of me anyhow, like, if he does notice the attendance goes down, he'll...
Yeah.
Well, safety is primary.
Oh, I, I, a hundred percent of that.
Okay.
Now, next time, we're gonna, we're dealing with the new procedures, right, is that...
I believe so.
Yeah, right, which is the special permit.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because we, yeah, we just got notification that the AG's office approved all of our zoning...
Oh, awesome.
Bylaws, so...
Just trying to give you a heads up.
Well, of course.
Nope, I've been lawyers and all that.
Have you been nosy around here?
Oh, the way it's been...
Okay, all right, so...
I would move that we allow for the, some, the Mudfest for November eleventh, did you say?
Yes.
With all conditions still in place, as previous, there's some of the possibility of less police officers.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Bob, you still gonna go see the board of health?
Yep.
Oh yeah, you're gonna do that, you got, yeah. You gotta do that.
I seen you, this was a buy in earlier.
It was what?
Jared, do you...
I saw him earlier, I go, this is...
You have a tag on that seat?
Oh, my shirt's in the beer workshop.
Ain't that the truth, yeah?
So is that the fireworks in a beer garden, live dance?
Button at you.
Troublemaker, always a troublemaker in the crowd.
Okie dokie, spidokie. All right, so our next appointment's at eight thirty. So, the next thing we have is...
Junk furniture?
Junk furniture, yes, so we have some junk furniture at one oh five... So we have some junk furniture at 105 Circuit Street. It has been sold, so that's good.
It's always good to hear.
Yeah. Um, what is he? Somebody's working on something at Fisheries and Wildlife. Oh, no, that's okay, we're outside, that's something to do with that. All right, so, we have three proposals or forms for the police chief assessment. I know Charlie had left, um, them on your, um, pile last Friday. You know, I know one of them, we have worked with before, which is Badge Quest. I think that Badge Quest was the, um, agency who worked on our sergeant's assessment. I, I asked Ted, I believe it was, because I have Chief Sullivan's phone number in my phone, so that tells me, and I, you know, I thought we had worked with them before. So I think they have done a fine job. Um, the other one that Charlie was recommending to as well, to pick from, would be the consultant, the MMA Consultant Group, Inc. So I don't know if you guys have an opinion on which, which company you would like to award the contract to.
I've read it, you know, and I, I think that the last session around with the sergeants was a good pick, you did a good job there. I mean, we're, we're looking for, if they use the same criteria that they use to pick the sergeant for the chief, then I, then I have any problems with it.
I, I tend to agree. Does the chief have any thoughts, you have any charges, Ted?
Uh, I believe the fact that, uh, they're local, um, they know the area, they know the conditions, they know the towns, um...
And they know our town.
Right, and they know our town.
Never heard any, any complaints about the company, um, so I, yeah, Badge Quest would be fine.
Okay, do I have a motion that we award the contract to Badge Quest?
So moved.
We, have we got prices yet?
Um, Charlie, they're all within the amount that we had budgeted, in fact, under the amount, yeah.
I would second that, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, Mont Ponce Pond funding, the state legislature overrode the governor's vetoes for funding the Mont Ponce Pond, and Charlie's gonna follow up to confirm the amount of the money available. So that's good, so we, you know, the ponds have been very healthy, non-mono point.
Yeah, considering the heat and...
Yeah. Yeah, we're definitely making progress. So we have another seven minutes. Junk cars at 24 Cherry Street and 65 Coby Drive. Um, Charlie recommends that the board instruct him to inspect these properties, and if more than one vehicle remains, that Charlie will issue a fine notice as each owner has been notified twice about the problem, and once of those notification was by certified mail.
So moved, second, that sounds like a break.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, school repair project, the documents on the inspections, I think you both have been...
Yeah, we've been there.
...mealed of those. We have another meeting tomorrow, just to kind of check in with everybody. Uh, John Lemieux from, um, Vert, Vertex was, was not able to make tomorrow's meeting, he has another project emergency.
So Steve couldn't make it either, right?
Yeah, Steve can't, but we do, I, I, when I was at the elementary school today, I met...
They've now assigned somebody.
Yeah, so his name is Marty, and I met him yesterday, I mean, today, and he will be coming, and he will be, he'll bring the agenda and walk us through it.
Are they still, are they still on schedule at, at this point?
As far as I know, we're on schedule, and Ted and I and the chief bumped into him in the hallway. Um, he was walking around and doing his inspection with his, um, board, so it looks like he was pretty efficient, so... Hopefully, he'll be able to give us an update tomorrow.
We'll, we'll see.
Yeah. Okay, so we have various departments need the board to sign off for the annual department signing signature authority forms. So I didn't see those in here.
What's this?
No, that's just at my folder, oh, they're at the end. I like that new copy machine, how it does the non-stable.
Yeah, that's nice.
They're getting lazy in their old age. They're getting lazy.
The non-staple staple.
Oh, here. No, that's not it.
Yeah, he's, he's been hanging around all night.
The fly?
Yeah.
Oh, here we go. And there's one more. There's actually a few. So one is for Pamadusi, right? And one is for...
Well, who signs off on the four?
Well, I think that, I think you, because you sign off on payroll for the board of selectmen, you would sign the board's selectmen.
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't signed one for duty.
You know what, why don't we leave these and then tomorrow Charlie can tell us who to sign. Let's do that. Okay?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll firm our contracts. Okay, we already, we already talked about Dylan Riley last meeting returning to work on July 19th, so... Um, the union contracts, we have the patrol officers, fire chief ready to sign, which I think we already signed. But, chief? You need yours, we have to sign yours, whenever you got a minute.
Okay.
Yeah. There's just a no for Charlie. Okay, earth removal operation Thompson Street, no further complaints, but no application either. So I, I think we have somebody...
You know, last meeting.
Okay, all right, all right. That's what I thought.
Is this Circus Street, the same street?
All right, so now I'm gonna kind of go off that list because that's last year. I mean, last week.
No, last week.
Okay. So this is the, the 125,000 for the ponds, that's the amount, and then 220 additional funds, okay. Violation, file... Cherry Street, this is all the notification of the... Okay, construction. I think this is it.
You got a street opening, don't you?
Yeah, there was, yeah, where was that, there was, um...
We have a road opening now.
Like two, I thought.
So I could go through those, because we still have five more minutes. Okay, so the first road opening is for a four-by-six road cut tie and a four-by-35 road cut trench at 368 South Street to install a new gas line service.
Have the department been notified?
So the building inspector...
Are we past the five years? Has it been five years already since that was done? Wow, that's scary.
Has it been five years? So we have, the trench permit has been approved by the building inspector, the police chief has requested one detail, the highway surveyor has signed off on it, water has signed off on it, and conservation has signed off on it.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, the next road cut would be for a four-by-six road cut tie in and a four-by-45 road cut trench at 435 Homestory to install a new gas line. Um, the trench permit has been pulled and approved by the building inspector. The police chief has required one detail officer, the highway okay's, the water okay's, conservation okay's. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we just got the top copy to sign on this?
So I just need to, Charlie's notes that he typed up for... So then I know we're all done. So we did the road openings, we did the temporary, we did McDonald's, we did the memo from the building inspector for 75. Water selectmen signatures for the state primary, we did that, howland services. Glass recycling, I don't have Charlie's notes on that, do you know that?
On what, I'm sorry? You know what, that was like an email slash, um, it was an email that he received.
Okay. You didn't have any notes for it?
Yeah, there was, um, a document from the town accountant about articles with balance, I think he's probably gonna check on those to make sure that they carry over.
Okay, and then I have Habib Associates proposal request for three, four, and five, and those look like that those, those are change orders?
Yeah, I think they are.
Okay, so I've got those right here.
Yeah, for the wood, the, the rock.
Charlie didn't have any notes, so...
Yes, I have them right here, so we have... Oh, this is not a change order for direction or proceed for the work described here. So this is for observations, the framing repairs at the termite damaged wall that are, that's in progress, and that's the one that was, was brought up already at the meeting, so... Do we have to make a motion to fix it?
No, they don't, they're a whole request, they're a whole request.
I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't say there's a change, like, there's no funds attached to this.
Is this just a notification?
Yeah, there's nothing here.
Well, we can affirm it.
Yeah, we can always affirm it, but, and then here's another one at the dishwashing room, remove the existing...
Yeah, that was the window.
Yep, window.
That's the one where I was pushing, it wasn't our fault, it was theirs.
Yeah, so I'm not surprised we're not being charged, well, I think we should be.
I, I don't think we should be either, but I couldn't get a commitment from them.
Well, I don't have any kind of change order, so we can ask them about it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay. So... Okay, we're done, bye.
And it's 8:30.
Oh, it's 8:32, sorry. All right, we're here to talk about the senior center, with the building committee. But before we talk about that, can I just tell you, we got a request from the Board of Health for their office to have a Dutch door installed. A Dutch door.
Upstairs?
Yeah.
Yeah. Think you could take the chainsaw and cut it in half, if you don't say?
Did they say why you needed a Dutch door?
I think that they're concerned about safety, I think that, you know...
Safety issue.
I think people feel a little vulnerable when the doors open and anybody can walk in, that maybe perhaps if it, you know, we can't really have a counter up there, this is my guess, that, you know, the top would stay open and the bottom would stay down, so that somebody couldn't come in and charge.
Are all the offices going to move Dutch doors? If it's a safety issue like that?
They're feeling it's a safety issue for their office.
We are talking about making some moves and easing up some of the office space upstairs, not so much moving people out, but maybe getting some of the filing cabinets out if we make a switch. It might be easier to just build a little half a wall and destroy the door. And get people piled up.
Then you can't shut the door, oh, no, you'd have to, yeah.
No, 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 you, just a little Elko as you're walking in, it's no different than climbing over a door if you want to get in. I think we need to look at it.
Okay. All right. Okay. And then do you want to, before we get on the senior center, do you want to talk about the ramp or anybody? Because I know you talked about passing over the ramp, but we had some people that were concerned about that.
Yeah, I know, well, the fact is, I mean, we don't really know how out of code it is, and how can you pass something at town meeting if you don't know? I mean, all we were, all the building committee was gonna do was dress the, a lot of the trim boards on the outside of the ramp, they're kind of rotted out.
I think it has something to do with the pitch, too, June.
But if we're just dressing up the code, I mean, or, if you go and put a ramp in, you're talking about a lot of money.
Yes.
You know what I mean? But if you dress it up a little bit now, maybe we could put that off until a capital plan and, and do it. I mean, rather than Florida at a time, then, in a week's notice, and they weren't probably not having this week.
So you're saying the...
They don't have, they don't have a price anyways.
Right, but this, again, this request came in because we had somebody that has almost hurt themselves a couple of times on the ramp. And I'm only gonna tell you about what I have heard, and, so, when I spoke with Scott about it, he, I don't know if he had talked to the building inspector about if, if you are changing something on the ramp, it becomes... You have to bring it to code or something?
I think Scott wanted to, instead of the railing that, and the posts that he has down there, colonial look, he was gonna have some metal railings made that might be a little more sturdy, and that would be a major change.
Okay.
And that throws it into compliance territory, and that was the problem out there.
Yeah, but if you just dress, take those trim boards out there and repaint them, they're looking.
Here's the other part of the problem, if in fact it isn't code compliant, we're all now on notice. And if we have an incident, it makes it more egregious, that, that, that's why everybody's been struggling with it. But, but to your point, we don't know what we're dealing with.
No, it's, it could be something we could deal with, get prices, get actual, uh, an engineer involved and tell us what exactly is wrong with the, with the ramp.
I, I, I think, again, to your point, I don't think we have enough time to grant this to town meeting. If it becomes an emergency, we may have to look at something else, but I, I...
As long as people can say it is completely safe, because we have people that use it on a daily basis.
Nobody's gonna say that before Monday, that's the problem. You, in order to get that kind of determination, we need an engineer on board. And I know Scott's been trying to get somebody to come down and make an assessment of it, not just us.
But the problem about passing over it right now is that if we pass over this article, and we have an engineer come in and they say, whoa, you need to address this, we won't have any funding in place to get it done before the spring.
But what do you got for the, they don't know what it's gonna cost, $10 or $30,000?
But if we at least put some money aside, and I'll give up if that's what the final decision is, but if we at least put some money aside, if it's not that amount, it just goes into free cash, or there's, we would use it toward the, a capital plan item in the spring, but at least we're, we're protecting ourselves to have some money aside, and, no, that's, that's all right. You don't, if you want to pass over it, that's fine, that was my concern.
I, I think we may have another alternative.
Okay. All right, so the decision is to pass over it? Okay, well, your decision is to pass over, it's not mine.
No, mine's...
Yeah, I'll go on record saying I did not want to pass over the article, so...
Well, if we find out some new information before Monday, then...
Yeah.
I don't think so, but it's possible.
Okay, so thank you, everybody, for coming in, you know, I know that, um, John was at the finance committee last night. I'm sure all of you were still in a bit of shock when the numbers came in for the senior center, so... Um, we, we met with the finance committee last night, um, and the architect was there, and the OPM was there, and we talked about, you know, not only the difference in the price of the project, but adding on the soft costs. So the project meant that we were about 1.5 million dollars short in the amount of money that we need for the project.
I think it was the soft cost that knocked me out, I, I wouldn't...
Yeah, that, that kind of blew me over, too.
Yeah.
Because we had the OPM, OPM on board to assist us in, in getting these bids to the town's people properly. And to come in last night and to hit us with that figures, that he hit us with, it just blew me off the shit.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree, that's, that was my reaction, too, June.
And I'm sure that they're gonna be there. I had no idea that we were gonna have to pay the OPM that kind of money. I knew we were gonna have to pay them some money, and I was gonna, are you here to say we didn't have a contract for them?
Well, the thing that's...
Or we tried to.
The thing that annoyed me personally was the fact that he said to me, we plan on being there nine months. Well, you knew that from minute one, I'm thinking to myself, that didn't just happen last night that he decided that we'd be there nine months. So that number should have been tossed around a long time ago, and I know you felt the same way.
The second figure of the bid price should have been told to us six months ago.
Right.
We had a spreadsheet that they gave us, but it was primarily on hourly charges for different, uh, figureheads, you know? And the corker to work, if we were gonna use a corker to work for three days a week, or we could use them for five days a week, we had those figures, but we didn't have the figures what the OPM was gonna charge, and he never mentioned it the whole time. And that's what, it's just, I had him come into my meeting tomorrow, and I, the OPM, and I just, I'm telling him, I said, it just, you know? If it's, it's, that's what we gotta pay, that's what we gotta pay, but it's gonna put the project, it's put the project so high that, uh, you know, it's ridiculous.
Well, those of us that didn't make the meeting, what was the number of the OPM? 500,000 for soft cost.
For soft cost, but that included a contingency at 20%?
Yeah, 20%, 250,000 for contingency, because you got 20, 2.7 million projects, so you got 250,000 on a contingency. And 250,000 would be for OPM... And two hundred and fifty thousand would be for OPM and testing, whatever testing that...
I didn't... Yeah, I didn't understand what that was.
Well, it's like the tiles in the kitchen, they have to be tested if they're asbestos, non-asbestos. And we might have a little... We might have a little problem with the... That's why we built the building a little farther away from the previous building. They call... Would merge the two foundations together.
Right, right.
There could be a problem there.
Because it's a... Considered a rubble foundation and...
Right. But we did move the building four feet out with a new foundation. So that was the crawl space, so we hopefully don't have any problem there. But we don't know until we take it out.
Yeah, undermining the old foundation.
So I was really shocked by the soft cost myself. And, you know, I wanted to take us back to the two million dollar number. Like, that included the soft cost? The two million? Like, when we went to town meeting, I thought that... Oh, it never did.
No, it was never mentioned until last night.
I mean, we had our meeting with the... He was going to work with us.
Yeah, go work with him.
We would do a...
We got to work.
We picked the items up. We're going to have a cost bracket. We're going to keep the cost down as low as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, until last night.
Yeah, until last night. So that's a little...
He would have never told the percentage of the project.
No.
If he had told us, like an architect, it's roughly six percent of the project. If he had told us, well, our fee will be probably anyways from four, five, or six percent of the total project price when it comes out, we would have known that's fair.
Yeah.
But we never knew that. He never told us that.
Right, because when those bids came in and, you know, all of us were afraid that it was going to come in higher just because of, like, the April meeting, right?
Right.
But I was still holding out hope that because the school had come in low, that it wouldn't quite be as bad. So when it came in at two point seven four, you know, we were all pretty shocked. But again, when we were sitting there last night, I mean, we talked a little bit about, you know, where would we come up with the funding? And Sandy had done some calculations, and to try to shove it within the levy will put us in a really tough financial position. Because we are very conservative about what we leave on the table, that we don't charge the taxpayer. This... We do it for two reasons, so that we're not burdening the taxpayer for the full levy. But we also do it, we like to keep that three hundred thousand dollars as an emergency if we had something changed within the budget and certainly...
Like special ed, for instance, because we can never anticipate that.
So for us to try to fit it within the levy and then we have something happens, we wouldn't want to be able to affect services. We don't want to cut services in order to accommodate the debt payment. So I know Charlie talked a little bit last night about, right now, it's approved the two millions within the levy, right? And with that two million within the levy, we have the normal amount of unused levy that we like. So we felt really comfortable that we could do it. So I think the finance committee from last night, I know you guys weren't there, but the finance committee felt like they could personally support. Each of them said they could personally support the project, but they could not support it within the levy. They would recommend that we dead exclude that one point five million, the amount that's in addition. I know you hit, yeah.
The problem with that is that we can't do it at this special town meeting.
We don't think we can.
Probably need to change the articles.
Right.
Because we're afraid... So that's what... So Charlie was unfortunately not here today. So we think that it may... That the moderator may deem it too much of a change to be done. Like, we didn't put the residence on notice enough to be able to make that substantial change to the article for this different kind of...
Well, he's also concerned about the bond agent.
Yeah.
You know, that they're comfortable with it, too, regardless of whether we think we can do it. You know, we can't bond it if they're not comfortable with it. So he's got some phone calls to make tomorrow. We may have some better information by Monday.
So we know you have...
If that's the case and if you move it to a dead exclusion, would it still be voted on Monday night or would it...
I don't know if it can be. But before we get to that, like, does anybody from the building committee? I know that you haven't formally met, but do you have any comments or concerns? Do... What do you feel? Or... No.
Right. I don't think that they really understood it. I mean, they're here last night. There was quite a bit of discussion about it. But as a building committee, we haven't been...
You haven't met.
At least I knew we haven't met on this particular project.
But did they have any questions?
But the other projects we have and haven't had to really run into that problem.
No, I mean, no, I totally understand, but I'm just saying this is a perfect opportunity because we knew we were all meeting tonight. I didn't know that we would, like, get so much done last night of the discussion. But does anybody want to talk about it or have any questions?
Now, the state budget's been passed and been signed. Where are we with the state as far as grant money? Or is it gone? Is it still available? Or is it still...
I don't know.
Was it two hundred thousand, five hundred fifty, or...
Were they putting it in for another year?
I understood it was supposed to be...
That could be another phone call that Charlie could make to our state senator and see if...
Right, because I think that money was going to... Bert, can you remind me? Because I know you were really working with Senator Brady on that. Can you remind me?
I could check with somebody.
Do you mind? Because I thought that that was kind of a tie to a certain fiscal year, and I didn't know that it would still be available. I hope I'm wrong. But...
I don't want to talk like that, though.
Yeah, unless you renewed it and put it in again.
Right.
Oh, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
You might have just kept it going again. It wasn't taken this year.
Yeah. So hopefully it is, yeah.
We also alluded to last night, and it was just briefly, but we had sold some property that we might be able to use to help offset some of the cost. But even that would require a vote town vote.
So obviously Charlie couldn't be here today. Sandy couldn't be here. So the looking for the additional funding was sort of halted for the day. But, you know, to Tom's point, like, if we... If we thought we were only looking at five hundred thousand, which is what we thought the worst-case scenario could be, then we were already trying to identify different sources, you know, just to make this happen. Because we... I mean, we... Obviously, you need to bring it to the townspeople. We... This is the commitment we have made.
We've gone down the road so many times with this thing, we've got to find a way to do this thing.
So does a dead exclusion make it certainly more challenging? Yeah, it does. But I don't know any other way of doing it unless there's some kind of unex... You know, there's... Sandy, again, ran the numbers last night. And, you know, I said this last night. This is so important to all of us. Like, this is huge for us. We want this to happen. But we can't just think with our hearts. We have to think, you know, we have to stay with the way that we budget so that we don't put all the services at jeopardy if something happens.
And either way, regardless of how we finance it, we came up with sort of an average kind of a cost per tax.
And it was a hundred and fifteen... So the project as a whole will cost the average taxpayer a hundred and fifteen dollars per thousand.
That's the average.
That's the three point five million dollar...
A thousand per year?
Per year.
Per year.
Per year. A hundred and fifteen dollars per year.
Per year.
But that's for the entire three point five million dollar project. So... So we have some facts that we can present.
And then you have to juxtapose it a little bit. I mean, we did get the bids for the school down a little bit, so I want to look at what the total cost of all the projects is versus what we thought it was going to be. Anyway, it may not be a whole lot different.
But what's different is the soft cost, though.
Yeah.
Right, the soft cost.
Yeah, this looks, you know, fierce.
I mean, again, we have to go back. Do we need to use all the soft cost? I mean, you're saying six percent. Do we need to use it?
No, opposite.
Right.
Why do we have to do that?
Is it stated?
I know. The state says we have to have...
It gives them a license to steal.
I know, but can we get them for it, just the way you agreed to? The way you agreed to work with us and keep the cost down?
I mean, we can deal with them tomorrow night.
Based on whose idea what costs is down.
Is your meeting at seven?
Well, we said we could probably afford to...
Well, the one question that I ever had is that several people have asked me today about it. We had the school project. Why didn't we use the actions that were taken through that as a blueprint to do the council aging?
It's a completely...
Those questions need to be asked.
But it's a completely different project because I think...
No, I'm just... I'm just saying, do we have an OPM on the project for the project?
Yes.
The corker to works?
Yes.
Same question, same...
Yeah, we had a meeting with the OPM and we explained to him what our budget was.
And he lied to us.
Yeah, well, that's the point.
I mean, if you go to a school project, too, a week before town meeting, didn't they boost it up a million dollars?
A week before town meeting?
No, no, that's when we were talking about fire suppression.
The fire suppression got doubled, yes.
Yeah, right, but you were getting figures on the school budget and everything else.
Yeah, so that's... Yeah, that fire suppression system has really been difficult because that doubled twice. So originally, it was five hundred, then it went to a million, then I think it was going to go...
They started talking about one point seven or something.
And then we didn't have anybody bid for it, which is why the project didn't get done. So that's still on the table and needs to be paid. And we had secured nine hundred thousand dollar project, like the levy. The payment for the levy, we had secured that within the levy. So we take our excess levy, we minus what the senior center's payment would have been, and then we minus what the fire suppression system would have been. And that net was the three hundred thousand dollar buffer that we normally carry. So all that was being, like, identified at budget time. So before the finance committee looked at any budgets last year, we subtracted those debt payments. So right now, all we have for the fire suppression is nine hundred thousand dollars.
And we know that's not going to work.
So that's the other thing that's kind of looming, and that's the fire suppression system. So...
So it's the proverbial rock and hard places.
Yeah, because we don't... We won't even be able to get that number because we can't... Now that school is starting, we can't even start that construction until next spring. So that puts off the bidding process until closer to then. So not really a problem, but when we talk about the prices change.
It's another cap. It's...
Right.
Yeah.
And, of course, we hit the economy just right so that everything's flying.
And this... That, I think, is one of the biggest problems with the CM. These numbers are misleading.
Yeah, that's no question.
Because no one has help. No one has... The tariff costs are going up.
Twenty-five percent less.
Tariffs coming up, which is going to cost more than for the small pipe and lumber and everything else that goes into it.
You have the what coming in?
Tariffs.
Oh, the tariffs. That's what the... Did the OPM say that last night with tariffs? Somebody did that?
I still can't wrap my head around. We got a building. It's only, what, thirty by forty or whatever. It's a small building.
Yeah.
The cost cannot be that...
Now, I don't really think it's the new construction cost. I think it's the rehab cost.
Oh, there's no question about the rehab.
I mean, that's where it's...
Because everybody puts more into it because...
Because you don't know what you're going to find. Yeah, exactly. Open it up and then, what is this?
The only other problem I have, taking these classes, is it's a little method about the roof.
The roof? Remind me.
Well, when Scott wrapped the roof there, it was kind of a little...
Oh, spongy.
Spongy there, yeah. So if that's a lot of cost, it's going to be thrown off once we get into the project.
My guess is it's not ventilated properly. That's what's going on.
Well, I think then built later, that the space is different. So, I mean, that could be another kicker that you wouldn't know about, but that's going to be a big number.
Right.
The figures are kind of crazy because we take all of it at number one. That was just the hiding siding on the police station side of the old building. They got to pay it, yeah, twelve thousand dollars. And we got to have done it about four.
But remember, it's prevailing wage.
Well, yeah, still, I mean, it's most...
Still not that. Still not that.
I know. I know. It's not that big. I understand.
I can't wrap my head around. I promise.
People throw a noise against it.
I understand. But when you think of what things you...
The value, yeah.
The value that's going in there, just... I just can't get it.
I'm with you.
Is anybody going to talk with Dennis Carmen, local warden, in the one... Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
So do you have any use of a phone on day?
Oh, absolutely. So we have a meeting with Dennis Carmen on Thursday. And so we will, you know, work with him on what we can do and what we can't do. So Dennis Carmen is our new moderator.
But again, we need to talk to...
We have to worry about the bond consultant.
Bond consultant, yeah.
So Charlie, when he gets back tomorrow, I'm sure we'll check with bond consultant to get their opinion from their perspective.
I mean, we do have to say, we put this on the... We say it's going to be three point five million dollars. It's going to be out.
But like I said last night, to wait, it's only going to cost, no matter what we do, it's only going to cost us more. And to stop and reset and file something else is going to be six million. I mean, three... I don't know how many years ago that when it failed doing a new building on the spot. And I think that was like three million back then, right? So that won't be three million. It will be probably double what it was five years ago. So this is the most economical way of doing it right now because this is what we have on the table. And if we wait...
It's just going to get worse.
It's only going to cost more. And if this fails, I don't know where we go from here.
Nope.
That's the problem because we have exhausted, and we were all so positive when it passed a town meeting a year ago. And to have this happen is just devastating to our seniors and to all of us.
Most of us, even a year ago, when we saw that two million figure, I think it was really tight.
Really? Oh, I... I thought, well, we've all watched this thing go up.
I thought to me it was going to be great, to be honest.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was a little fearful because I was figuring in for contingencies, OPM, architect. And I knew that had amounted to that roughly that three hundred number that we talked about not tomorrow.
Yeah, I thought we had everything in it because I thought that's why we went from the one point seven to the two million. It was to cover all of that.
What was the contract for the siding and the windows? That was... Was that one seven?
One seven.
One seven? So, you know, that was just siding and windows at the school. And that was a very low bid. We expected two point eight or something.
So that's why we were so hopeful that maybe this would come in closer to what the two million was, right? But... And I think, Jerry, you're totally right. It's the economy of the right now that we're in.
It's exactly.
And the Jake, they just... They don't want it. They're so busy that they're just putting crazy money on it.
Materials in the last three months, almost twenty-five percent higher.
Well, I know materials, yeah, that's a question.
So where do we go from here?
We just have to find out and be able to learn and get a figure out where the finances go. How you work and present it to the town people, we can't do that.
We're going to have to do our homework as best we can and then go into town meeting with the best recommendation we can think of. And it may be to pass over until we have another town meeting. We've actually talked about having another special town meeting if we can't do it inside this town meeting because it's looking more and more like we're going to have to do a dead exclusion.
Was that... I know we talked a little bit to the Vertex last night about talking to the GCs to see if they could hold their price for thirty or sixty days.
They just put it for thirty days.
Thirty days of...
Sometimes they... So what he was saying last night, and I know this is true, Jerry, but he was saying that, you know, he could go to the GC and say, could you freeze your price for an additional thirty days?
You have to go all the subs. The subsidy and the else is all involved, too. So when you go to the GC, you can go back to all the subs. And normally, most of the subs will say, okay, because maybe it's prime time. They don't have any manpower for it. Thirty days will be... We'll take another thirty to extension. That's fine. If they throw up any cost. But if you want another thirty days, you can start giving them maybe some more cost.
Yeah, everyone's going to get panicky because they don't know what's been happening.
Right, so then we have to talk about how soon can we set a town meeting? You've got special elections coming up. Like, it's a really busy schedule, right? Because we were the primary, right? So we would have to...
Plus, we have to have an election, which isn't just...
But could we put the election in the primary? Like, could we do a, like, a two-for-one? Is that possible? Does anybody know?
I don't know if that's...
It's a state ballot. I mean, this is our town.
Right.
No, we just have a separate booth. You go in this booth, and you go in this booth, just to get it done. Because... All right. How long before we have to advertise for the special town meeting?
I can't tell you because I don't know.
They don't allow to do, figure out what your finances, you figure that your president at this town meeting. If he even gets voted on, wins or loses, or gets caught off. But you can't determine that until you do a financing. And then if it gets caught off, we'll know a town meeting, and we'll try to figure out what not to have. Let's just go one day at a time.
Well, here's part of it. The finance committee was pretty adamant that they would only support it if we went for a dead exclusion.
But what was nice is that they are personally supported the project.
But with a dead exclusion.
Which I...
To try to do it without going for a dead exclusion, they would probably be telling us at town meeting, and I don't... I'm guessing that they would not support it. Well, that's what we said last night, yeah. But it wouldn't be for the whole... It wouldn't be for all of it. It would only be for the one point five.
Yeah, it wouldn't be for the whole amount, like...
And we might actually be even able to reduce that to one three, but...
I don't know any other alternative unless we've made a terrible mathematical error and we think, oh, my gosh, we have this. But...
I'm going to tell you about one of the couple hundred, sure.
And so we don't even... We wouldn't even have the finance committee on our side. But I do think what a positive thing, if we come out of anything last night, is just having the four members of the finance committee say that they personally support the project. having the four members of the finance committee say that they personally support the project.
There was a lot of that discussion last night.
That was very, that was a great meeting there, too.
Yeah, I thought that was a really great positive thing. So we'll choose to concentrate on that and we'll figure out the rest. But do you guys have anything else you wanna ask us to talk to?
No problem, not mine.
Actually, you're right. Unfortunately, I'd like to throw it back at you, John, but I think you may be right.
Yeah, it's all up to you now. Sorry to give you such a big one, but-
Yeah, it is.
Well, all we can do is present it in, in the best fashion possible, and ultimately it's out of all of our hands. It's gonna be up to the voters that show up.
And if you get to present it, if we get to that point, that'd be a great idea to go through the history like we did last night, with the finance committee, cause of so many new people on board, to help them understand it a little bit more, whatever white people want.
Well, I think, you know, just going over the, the general history of how long we've been trying to do it is helpful. To get into details, I don't think it's particularly helpful, but the general history.
Unless we're asked. Asked for what, Barbara? The details. Oh, he said, don't go into the details unless we're asked.
Well, if you're asked, you have to answer, but, I mean, I would, it would just belabor the thing, it would go on forever and-
Yeah. Do you have a board feel that putting this bid list up on Facebook was a good idea or a bad idea at this particular time?
I think it was a good idea, and I'm gonna tell you that Charlie asked me before I left last night if it was, if I thought it was okay. And the reason why I thought it was okay is that we had a lot of activity on Facebook about the senior center. Charlie was gonna be away for a couple of days, people were gonna be going on asking for the information, and he wasn't gonna be around today, so he wanted to be proactive, knowing that people would be asking for the information, and just put it up there. So that's why he did that.
And you, you'd get more resentment by not doing it.
Yeah, so he just wanted to have-
And you'd start looking like we were all hiding this thing, and I don't, I don't think that would-
We're not hiding it, but we just don't know how we're gonna do it.
No, but the right thing to do is in fact, if we're going for the, for one point
five million, then people need to know before town meeting, you know, I'd rather do it this way than to walk into town meeting and say, look, this is what we're looking for. We haven't had a chance to-
I don't think if you put the bids up, it doesn't show that we're going for the one, I don't go on Facebook, so I don't know.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't show that we're going for the one five.
I didn't want to see-
Looks up for the whole thing, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't-
So it gives the town a bad impression.
Well, we are accepted.
We are going for three million now. We need, even though we already had two millions approved, the total project is three million.
It did say at the beginning of the thing that it wanted, there was an increase of one point five million in the beginning, if you read the whole thing, it said that, then it had the chart laid out, but it said we were looking for one point five million more.
Yeah, and, and again, Charlie did that because Facebook has been very active in asking, in tagging him and asking him, and, and he knew he wasn't gonna be here, and he didn't want to have people asking and then having no response, and then having people get upset. So that's why I thought it was a good idea when he asked me to, so I, you-
That's it.
That's it.
Rough as it sounds, that's it. That's what we got, and that's what we're gonna have to try to work with.
I agree, John.
Thank you.
You mind?
I have another meeting tomorrow night, but I'll try and come to you guys.
No, I'm, I'm over here, yes.
Oh, in here?
Yeah.
Not at the water?
Yeah, I'll look for them. It's kinda tight over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could have a potential pro.
So, good, appreciate the hard work you done, let's hold it all through.
Thank you for everything you guys have done too, really. This has been a long year and a half.
And if you actually start-
Or fifteen.
Yeah.
Or twenty years.
More like twenty.
If you actually start beating up the OPM, give me a call, I'd like to see it.
Ah, you want to be there with us?
Well, no, you know what?
Keep it.
I'd like to start with the architect who drew the Taj Mahal and started this to, to kinda direct, so I'd like to start with him.
Well, he, he kinda misled everybody along, along the way too, and that was, when you guys first started, you were pretty clear about the direction you wanted it to go, and then he just went off on his own anyway, and he knew what he was talking about.
Yeah, we brought him down here.
Yeah.
Oh, well, you can't turn back time, I guess.
We got what we got, and we're gonna see what we can do with it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You guys had laughed when Charlie asked me that, I hope you support that. He just wanted an opinion.
Well, you were on a roll last night, I'm very- It's easy, you can't-
Very, very upset with this whole ordeal.
It makes everybody look bad, and, and, and everybody went into this with the best of intentions.
No, but, but I guess my, my issue is still, of course it was asked, we had a blueprint, we knew what we had to do to get the school done, which was costing more, why didn't we use that to make sure we were getting everything lined up with the council aging? And it was, when the course was asked to me, I looked, I said, that's reasonable, because I'm not an expert on this.
Well, honestly, it wasn't a whole lot different. I, I, it just, it's the people involved. I think it started to Kim's, I think, which she was alluding to, it started with the architect. We didn't get the kinda response we, we thought we were gonna get.
Sent out a fire alarm to have everybody come to the town meeting, you know, I think.
All right, we are now here to talk to the fire chief about the proposals for the medical billing.
Thank you for doing this, but it seems that they're not gonna be here tonight.
Yeah, really, huh? I, I worked really hard trying to-
So we had, we put out a request for quotes, originally it was on the same, that we can do it that way. We had four companies send in proposals, three of them were at four percent, and one of them was at two point seven five percent. That also happens to be the largest company that does it, I believe, almost three hundred different providers, and many of them in Massachusetts and the surrounding areas. So I feel comfortable with them, and two point seven five percent is a good number. Charlie, Larry Mayo said that because the total number of the contract would be over fifty thousand, that we can only do a two-year contract right now, so that makes sense.
That was my next question. Another two point seven five, two point seven five, I can't get it right, one thing and another. That's what our cost is gonna be?
So they take-
Of what they collect.
Of what they collect, two point seven.
Not what they give. I, I mean, what, what they, of, of the money they actually get.
Exactly, what they collect, not what they build for.
Yeah, right, right, exactly what I was trying to say.
Two point seven five.
I, I understood.
Well, I knew you did, cause I was, I was not making it clear.
We've met with Sandy and Pam, and everyone seems to be pretty much on the board of the way it's all gonna work, with the bank accounts set up and things like that. We're gonna have a meeting Thursday morning just to finalize all that, but I think that's pretty much it. So my recommendation is that we, that the board give ComStar two-year contract, and I think Charlie had paperwork for that.
We have everything, so this is the thing. There's a business associate agreement, so there's two copies of that, and then there's a ComStar agreement.
Right.
Okay.
And attorney managers looked over all of that, made changes to it.
Okay, so we need a motion to authorize the chair to sign the contract, because this is the one that they thought was the Holland.
We all signed it.
Oh, did you all sign it?
Yeah, everybody signed it.
All right, so do you have a motion that we execute the contract?